Next order is action on the agenda. Any changes to the agenda, Dr. Scheiger?
There are no changes to the agenda. As you know, as we've mentioned, the wireless mics, the portable ones, there's an issue with them tonight. So make sure you speak in your regular speaking voice. We will be using the microphone up here. It's more for the crowd online, but we do have microphones scattered throughout the room to pick up the sound, so.
Okay.
No changes to the agenda.
Okay. I entertain and no change.
Make a motion to approve the agenda is presented.
Second.
Motion made by second, by Diamond, and seconded by Karen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, none, so move. Next item is action on the minutes, and that was from the November 26th, and they were included in your packet.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from November 26th.
A second.
Motion was made by Don, seconded by Diamond. We accept the minutes as published. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, so move. Item action, I need action on the vouchers.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve vouchers totaling $958,499.63 as per that.
Second.
Motion made by Mike, Mike then seconded by Karen to approve the vouchers as stated. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, so move. Public participation, I believe we don't have anyone signed up. Next, we move on to the student council report.
All right, so for student council report, we have the results for the student survey. I emailed them all to you, so if you need to access them, they're there. I'm gonna go through them right now, though. In total, we had 401 responses. The survey was emailed to every student at Milton High School, and every student had the opportunity to answer. 400 did. The first question we had on the survey was, "Have you ever had a discussion with your parents about past or future Milton School District referendums?" 79.8 percent said yes, they have. 20.2 percent said they had never had a discussion with their parents.
Second question said, "Do you find that MHS athletic facilities are adequate for student athletes, gym classes, and the community?" And 73.5 percent said no, and only 26.5 percent said yes.
The next question said, "Do you feel that Milton High School needs new pool?" 85.4 percent of the students said yes. 14.6 percent said no.
Next question, "Do you feel that more space is needed in classrooms?" And 76.5 again said yes, and 23.5 said no.
And then the final question, "Overall, do you feel that Milton's facilities and current high school meet the needs of students and faculty?" 83.3 percent said no. 19.8 percent said yes. So I can answer any questions you have, or if you need, next media can answer questions as well. But that's all we have for tonight.
Any questions? Thank you. Then went to all these students.
All the students at the office.
Thank you. Next item is building department.
All right, so we're at the middle school looking to the future. We've got some concerts coming up. Tomorrow, we have our choir concert at the high school at 7:00. Encourage everybody listening out there to attend. Next Tuesday, the 18th, we have our band concert, our 6th through 8th grade band concert at the high school as well. From teaching and learning, the middle school is gonna be looking at a program called Avid, which is a school-wide instructional model. On Friday, myself, Susan Probst, two teachers in the middle school, Andy Tubendorf and Terry Harberts, are gonna take a little field trip up to Minneapolis, actually, to observe an avid showcase at Robbinsdale Middle School. And we're really looking forward to that. The goal of Avid being to increase rigor, engagement, and relevancy in the classroom.
Just a couple of announcements for Northside. First, I want to give a shout out to the Milton Police Department. They've had a long-time partnership with Northside. We did a bunch with the cop program, where we tried to raise awareness about bullying and how children can be upstanders in our school community, as well as I think can report bullying issues to school. We recently met with two 4th grade classrooms and really wanted to give a shout out to Chief Mark Bart and Officer Schneider, who came over and really helped deliver a strong message to our student body. Also wanted to put out there for all the radar, our superstar luncheons are coming up this Thursday. Quarterly themes this year, we're gonna be celebrating students who have gone above and beyond in demonstrating kindness and empathy. Super important this time of year, the holiday season. And lastly, wanted to give the board just an opportunity to take a look at our Northside Student News publication that just went out last week, to kinda take a look of classroom happenings and learning through the eyes of students at Northside.
At the K3 level, I'm gonna speak to our strategic objective of community engagement. This time of year, we are infusing a celebration of the arts through our school music programs. Milton West does a arts night out, so their concert type of event isn't just music, but also the other arts. And at Harmony and Consolidated, we do a 2nd and 3rd grade program this time of year. Consolidated had theirs last week. The kids did a great job. Shout out to the staff involved and Mrs. Jewer's leadership. And Harmony's is coming up next week. And Milton West has school programs, excuse me, Milton East has programs at other times of the year, but they are inviting the Blue Notes in for an assembly sometime this month. So all of our schools are trying to engage the community in addition to celebrating the arts.
And in the K3 world for climate, culture, and relationships, we have just at West finished our kindness challenge, where we were encouraging both the staff and the students to demonstrate intentional acts of kindness towards everyone. We're continuing that as we are collecting and distributing food to those in need around the community. And then we're also in the K3 world trying to encourage our staff members to make sure that, especially during this hectic time of year, that they are taking care of themselves because they can't take care of our children if they first don't take care of themselves. So we have given and talked about self-care with a monthly calendar of one little thing to do each day of this month, so that they are taking care of themselves as well.
All right, the high school in both teaching and learning, but also in community. We do have our holiday concerts coming up. We do have the choir concert this Wednesday, and then next Monday is the band concert. Also, next week, Tuesday, we do have our early graduates, those seniors who are graduating in semester, we have their academic and career plan portfolio presentations. So we actually have 12 students that will be giving those next week, Tuesday. Also, one bit of a unique thing, we did have this last week, Dr. Bartels, one of the associate principals at the high school, worked with the science department, they all videotaped themselves, taping one or two classes and some more. It's quite a humbling experience to go and videotape an entire class, then watch it with an administrative critique what's happening, and then to even with the team. But it's a department that kinda stepped up, looked at it, as we are infusing next-generation science standards and best practices. It was a very, very healthy activity that they did. And also very proud to, and I know the email went out to the board, but we're very proud this last week that the National College Board announced their 2018 honor roll in 394 districts in the United States and Canada. High schools in those two nations, Milton High School is recognized as being that honor roll. That's for increasing students taking the AP test and increasing the number of students who are passing the test. So they add that you can encourage more students to take the test, and you can also increase the scores. So we're very proud of the entire AP teaching staff and the students who took AP courses fast.
4K, community engagement. We have a make and take coming up on Monday that will be held at the Small Wonders Learning Center upstairs. K3, just to add on to what my colleagues were talking about, high-quality staff. We had a shout out to Jana Selk and Clarissa Barnett, who are two of our literacy, from the literacy department, kind of put on a little rodeo, went to all K3 schools, helping our staff become trained in this phonemic awareness. It's called Hagerty training, but just a shout out to them because to make it to every building before school, get that done, get back to your home building, and then get down to business, takes a lot of extra effort.
Thank you. And on the communications and school safety side of things, just a couple of quick updates for you. The first one is, you've seen the press release about it, but thanks in large part to the partnerships that we enjoy between our social workers and the police department, as well as our building principals. This Wednesday from 4:00 to 6:00, there'll be 12 different students being recognized for exceptional student behavior, leadership, and character traits. Will enjoy the experience of shopping with a cop. And that'll happen from 4:00 until 6:00 on Wednesday. It'll take place out at Walmart. The Milton Area Chamber of Commerce's Shining Star Program is also an active participant in helping financially provide those opportunities, so that there's no expense to district taxpayers as a result of those things. So it's been a great public-private partnership. The second thing I'd like to talk about is this Thursday at 9:00, we'll be recognizing our Consolidated Elementary School students, who for the second consecutive year have had the highest DPI state accountability report card score. Mrs. Stukey, Mr. Schatz, and others are putting together a wonderful celebration this Thursday at 9:00 to recognize these outstanding students and the staff that are helping them achieve such high academic success. All right, on top of that, in the land of teaching and learning, today our teachers took part in the first annual Milton Innovation Summit for our PD Day. So we started the day with a couple of our own Northside students kicking it off with a little monologue with Dr. Scheiger, and then we passed it over to a national speaker, George Kuros, who spoke to our staff about innovation and how to change your practices, how to do things differently, and really gave an amazing, amazing speech that had everybody truly engaged. From there, we had lots of our staff members and then other staff from around the area presenting to our staff in a wide variety of topics all around, innovation and technology. We had our gym full of different types of technology, a technology playground, if you will, where we had drones, where we had VR, where we had lots of different gaming systems for educational purposes being displayed, and our teachers getting to try hands-on, and all with the purpose of doing more of those kind of things within our classroom. So it was an amazing day, and we're really proud of our teachers and a big thank you to all the people that made this stand.
Anything else? Okay, thank you very much. Next item is Red Hawk recognition.
Hey, thank you. I'm excited to be back again. I want to speak to the board every board meeting, and that would get a little dull for me. I'm really excited to introduce the girls varsity golf team and their coaching staff tonight, so I'm gonna, when I say your name, I'd like you to stand up. I'm gonna start with the coaches. Extremely proud of a couple of coaches. Kirk stepped down from head coach in August, which is also when girls golf starts. So scrambled a little bit and had a couple of ends with a couple of people that I knew who knew somebody that might be interested, and really excited to have, at that time, Ashton Stare, stand up please, and Brady Farnsworth, two MHS grads, both played golf here, both the age of my children, so they're very young still, as I haven't gotten older since. Seeing those two kids coach our golf team was like, almost like a proud father moment for me. So I'm very, very happy for that. We do have our volunteer coach. Where'd he go? Did he hide? He took off 'cause I said I read. Oh, there he is back there. My movie, I'm also volunteering. I told him he wouldn't have to come up or do anything. Like to introduce our girls, we had a senior, a junior, and three sophomores, if I got it right. Is that right, girls? Well, let's meet our sophomores. Callie Hackola, stand up. Grace Weiss, and Reagan Moisen, and our junior Claudia Seaman, and our senior Taylor Hackola. Congratulations for qualifying for, once again, for the state tournament, Division 1 Girls Golf. Just note to the board that the Division 2 state champion was also from the Badger Conference in Madison Edgewood.
If the students and parents have something very interesting that they would rather attend than to stay for the rest of our meeting, you're most welcome to leave. Thank you for coming to support your students and children. The next item is the 2017-18 financial audit report. We have Tara Bass here from Johnson Block. Tara?
I'm sure they don't want to stay for the audit presentation. Good evening, I'm Tara Bass with Johnson Block Company. I'm a manager with our firm out of Madison. I've been working with the district on their annual financial audit for many years now. There were two items that were issued as part of our financial statement audit. You have the full audit report, which I believe was provided to you electronically. And then also annually, we issue a communication packet. And I believe also you may have received electronically the summary packet that I put together for tonight's presentation, and I also printed out some copies and set them up in front of you tonight. So I'll primarily focus on the summary packet report. The audit report itself is quite lengthy and detailed. I'm sure you've all read it, but cover to cover. But if you have questions specifically on audit report itself, please don't hesitate to ask, otherwise I'll focus on the summary. So if you open up the summary, really the first part goes through the content of the audit report, starting with our independent auditor's report or our opinion letter. Our role as an auditor is primarily to provide an opinion on the financial statements. The financial statements are the responsibility of management of the district. So we're hired to review and provide an opinion or audit and provide an opinion on those financial statements. So we issued an unmodified opinion, which means we feel the financial statements are fairly stated or free of any material statements. And then there's various sections following our opinion letter of the report. You have the management's discussion and analysis section, which is an additional narrative that helps support the financial statements themselves, as well as the note disclosures. Then you have a couple sets of financial statements. The government-wide financial statements that are on the full accrual basis of accounting, which account for the district's operations more like a for-profit business. Long-term liabilities are on the face of the balance sheet. Long-term assets are recorded on the balance sheet and then depreciated over time. And then you have your fund financial statements. Those are on the modified accrual basis of accounting. That's the basis of accounting that the district budget's on, and the day-to-day operations are under that basis of accounting. Then you have the notes to the financial statements, which contain the summary of significant accounting policies, as well as other detailed note disclosures that again help support the financial statements themselves and provide additional detail. Then there's two sections of required supplementary information and supplementary information. Schedules included in those sections include a budget-to-actual schedule, some required schedules for the Wisconsin retirement system, as well as your other post-employment benefits and supplemental stipend benefits. There's some required disclosures related to those benefits as well. And then additionally, as part of our audit, we do what's called the compliance audit, a federal single audit and a state single audit. So annually, we do an assessment of the district's federal and state programs, and based on our audit processes, we test a sample of different federal and state programs and provide an opinion on the compliance with those programs. So we didn't, both the financial statement and the single audit, we had no issues or compliance findings. Everything was clean. The district office is always prepared for us and very organized, and we really appreciate how much work they put into having all the information available for us before we're ready. On the second page, other reports that we compile and report to DPI, there's two submissions that are reported to DPI, the reports the district submits. And then also, there's a data collection form that will be submitted by the end of the year to the federal clearinghouse. That's required to just upload the audit report and the single audit package to the federal clearinghouse for compliance purposes. Additionally, as I mentioned, we issue a communication packet. There's two letters in there. The first letter, audit matters requiring communication to the governing body. That's really a standard language letter, something we're required to issue. If there was anything unusual in that letter, I'd point it out, but really it's just standard language, and there's nothing specific or unusual like other years. And then from time to time, we'll issue what we call management letter comments or recommendations. A couple in our communication packet this year, the first being related to bank deposits and just the timing of deposits at the bank at the end of your fiscal year, being in excess of federal and state deposit insurance. Usually, that is just a timing issue. I know with the district here, it sometimes is related to the timing of transferring money from one bank account to another to cover your own payroll expenses and payroll taxes. So I know I've had conversations with Mary Ellen in the district office about that, and they're completely aware of it and are working on what they can do timing-wise to make sure that that risk is reduced. Additionally, the next two comments were really just informational. The first about the unused balance in Fund 38. Your debt service fund, Fund 38, no longer has any debt obligations outstanding in that fund. So per guidance, DPI recommends transferring that residual fund balance out to either the general fund, or I believe it was planned to transfer it to Fund 39, which is the other debt service fund, to then pay the remaining debt service left in Fund 39. And then the last comment on fiduciary activities is something I'll work with the district office on, but really that's just a new accounting standard coming out to be aware of. If you flip to pages 1 and 2, page 1 gives you a brief overview of the general fund balance sheet. So for purposes of the audited financial statements, your general fund includes both Fund 10 and 27. So it gives you a comparison of the balance sheet at the end of 2018 compared to 2017, broken down by your assets, liabilities, and fund balance. So really, the question we get a lot is, "How are we doing? How is the district doing?" And our answer to that question usually is, "Well, let's take a look at the district's fund balance." So in the middle of this page there, you'll see a breakdown of the district's fund balance at the end of the year, and then a computation of the unassigned fund balance as a percent of the budgeted expenditures. So you're roughly around 15% in your unassigned fund balance compared to your annual budget, slightly down from 16% in the prior year. Somewhere between 10% to 30% is a healthy fund balance, I would say. It really depends on the district's cash flow needs throughout the year, and again, you know, the health of the district's fund balance can also, you can look at the district's reliance on short-term borrowing to determine whether or not your fund balance is sufficient. But again, we usually recommend somewhere between 10%, 15% to 25%, 30%. So again, just depends on the cash flow throughout the year of the district. The bottom of that page is a summarized income statement for the general fund, looking at 2018 budgeted expenditures and revenues compared to actual results. The budgeted expenditures, or the budgeted general fund, budgeted for a decrease in fund balance of roughly $104,000. Actual results was an actual increase of $75,000. And then page 2 is just a comparison between the two years of the rest of the district's funds, non-major funds, between June 30, 2018, and June 30, 2017, your special revenue funds, the debt service funds, and then the food service fund. Page 3 and 4 give you a graph and pie chart look at the general fund and debt service expenditures. Page 3, a trend over the last five years, and then a comparison between the last two years on page 4. You know, like most districts, instruction being your largest expenditure, that supports non-program services, and then your debt service. Pages 5 and 6 are the same graphs, but for general fund revenues. State aids being the largest revenue source for the district, followed by local dollars, tax dollars. And then you also have your federal grants and other revenue sources. Page 7, this information is derived from your full accrual financial statements, so it takes a look at the different functions and programs by expenditure functions, instruction, pupil instruction staff services, administration and finance, and what the annual expenses are in each of those functions. And then side by side, looks at the program revenues that are generated from those activities, and comes up with your net cost. So really, that net cost is then what is supported by your state general aids, other general revenues, and taxes. Page 8, I'll just point out, there's additional detail on pages 40 and 41 of your budget-to-actual comparison schedules, but just a couple functions that were reported, expenditures in excess of budget, both in the general fund related to building and administration services, and then purchased and non-program services, both had functions in excess of the budget. But again, overall, total expenditures were under budget. And then the last page there, page 9, is just a view of the district's general obligation debt versus the allowable capacity. So under state statutes, the district can borrow up to 10% of the equalized value in the district. So your allowable debt limit is just shy of $181 million. Your outstanding debt at the end of 2018 was $120,000, so. Those were kind of the highlights I had planned to go over. Were there any questions or any additional detail you'd like me to go over? I know it's a lot of information in a short period of time, and I always say, the district staff has my email if any questions from a bathroom back after I walk out the door, but.
Do you have any questions? Tara, thank you. I know the central office is always anxious to see you every year, and it's good to hear that they have done very well at making sure that everything is in order and compliant. Thank you very much.
Yeah, the testament to Mary Ellen and her staff who are building budget managers and all of our budget managers across the district. And when Tara comes and her peeps and joins us for a few days, you know, we feel very good that they go through things thoroughly and also make recommendations that are appropriate. And again, we're feeling very fortunate that we'll get another clean bill of health. So thank you to all the budget managers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is the curriculum committee report that was out earlier this afternoon. Karen?
As Tom mentioned, the curriculum committee met today at 4:30. We had the pleasure of hearing from Mr. Billhorn and Mr. Rubblez on some of the new courses that are offered. I think they're planning on speaking towards that, but just kind of to sum up, there's five new courses being offered at the high school and three replacement courses.
I can certainly answer any questions that you have, but as Karen said, the new courses are in the packet. At the top there is actually a new engineering program that we've been looking at. It's Project Lead the Way. It's a program that is in a number of schools. We've actually took a tour of Elkhorn High School and several others, looking at how it's been implemented. It's a very sound program. It's gonna be replacing two courses that we currently teach, and we're actually adding the computer science program, because we have a teacher who has license to teach it, and the current AP course is done very well. But the rest of the courses are laid out there. If there are any questions, I can certainly answer. I get the full report from the committee.
I think that one of the things you should highlight, Mr. Billhorn, is the fact that in these new engineering courses, our kids can get college credit for those courses.
Yes, part of Project Lead the Way is connection with Milwaukee School of Engineering. So just like an advanced placement course, at the end of the class or end of the year, they can take an exam for articulated credit through NSOE. It is, again, recognized as probably one of the best engineering curriculum that's on. It's a great opportunity for those students. Brian?
So it looks like the introduction to engineering design, I noticed that it says that startup costs will utilize act dig nine grant funds.
Yes.
Can you speak a little bit more than that? Can you speak a little bit more of that, to that, as like how much we received in that, in that grant?
Okay, the Act Fifty-Nine grant is for those high school students that achieve a certificate of etiquette. So it's welding or it's CNA, and it's money that's meant to be put back into the CTD program. So we have to put it back into that. That'd be the sixteen thousand dollars that we had last year for that, for that grant. That's actually the grant we bought the, for those that were at the summit today, all of the VEX robots that were purchased for the robotics club and engineering class. That's actually the, for casting a little bit, it's the same actually VEX robots that is utilized in the second course here too. So we've actually pre-purchased some of those materials already. But the startup cost, it's not a cheap program. There is a training to staff that they have to be certified to be with each project lead the way. They go to MSOE for a two-week training this summer. So it's a cost of sending them there, plus also a cost of a certification, plus the starter materials. For the three courses, it's going to be excess of twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars. Again, some of that's been addressed already with the robotics part of that. But between, and, and Mr. Ruggles can speak there too, between some title money, but also the Act Fifty-Nine money and money that I was putting into the, the two current courses, we'll be, we'll be able to.
As far as like the three D solid modeling, design software, we talk, you know, like CAD and stuff like that. And I know that.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I read what it was. I couldn't quote the exact program, Brian, I'll be honest. I know SolidWorks is one of the programs, but then there's the, I'd have to look it up.
Yeah, SolidWorks, yeah. Yeah, I know that, yeah, but that software is usually pretty, pretty costly. So it's, it's good to see it, you know, our Act Fifty-Nine.
Right. We currently, we currently got a license for, for specifically, we currently have a license for SolidWorks because we utilize that in a couple of our courses already. Like I have Mr. Brad's courses are already teaching that. But it's something that, again, while there's, it's a commitment to be going through this curriculum and it's the ongoing training of the staff, the network of teachers that the, our staff will get into it to actually implement it. So yeah, some very positive visits to Elkhorn. I mentioned I've also visited Longfond High School, Longfond High School, visited their project lead programs. And it's, I, I believe it's, it's by far the best decision to go for that area of our curriculum. Thank you.
Any other questions that were, Mr. Bill? It's always good to know that you're going over your current classes and seeing how we can improve on them. And maybe there's some classes that we don't have to offer anymore and they can be included in a new course and things like that.
Do you want to make one other note there too? The new FIA courses and that's replacing the, the global sports that will be part of also the global education certificate program. So students who can get a nationally recognized certification for those students to take a global even with their course selection. We wanted to buy a class to be part of that focus area for those students wishing to get that. But we look at different sports from across the world. When we play gaga ball, we would want to have some board members come and participate.
Come in?
Okay.
I don't want to participate in the team club. I don't know what that is.
Don't bother, Tara.
No.
Anything else, Karen?
No, do we need a motion on this? Yes? Yes? Okay.
I make a motion to accept the new course proposals for the nineteen, twenty-two thousandth school year.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by, by Karen to accept the new course proposals. Let's do a roll call vote, starting on at that end, Mike?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Diamond?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We'll be on to the policy committee report. Mr. Martin?
Okay, in our ongoing effort to update and, and vet our policies per the recommendations of our advisory firm, Neola, and our administrative team that guides entities for us, we will, we will have tonight what we'll propose as a first reading of a variety or a number of policies that I will read the numbers of and not their titles or content. But suffice to say that a lot of subtle changes, the vast majority of them are grammatical corrections and statutory compliance and some of that. So I will read as the first reading, policy numbers, twenty-two sixty, thirty-one twenty, thirty-one twenty-two, thirty-one thirty-nine, thirty-two thirty, forty-one twenty-two, forty-two thirty, fifty-two hundred, fifty-four twenty-one, fifty-five twelve, fifty-five fifteen, fifty-five thirty, fifty-seven seventy-two, fifty-eight seventy, sixty-five twenty, sixty-seven hundred, seventy-two seventeen, seventy-four forty, eighty-one forty-six, eighty-three twenty, eighty-three twenty point oh one, eighty-three forty, eighty-four oh seven, eighty-seven sixty, ninety-one thirty, and ninety-one sixty. And we will presumably do a second reading and adoption of both aforementioned policies at our next meeting. No action needed tonight.
Okay. Any questions for the policy committee report? Thanks, Mr. Martin. Next, item of business, review of potential referendum resolution.
Brian, what you have in your board packet is the draft of the official referendum ballot. Now you'll notice that there's the notice to voters, which has the directions about voting, et cetera. The instruction to voters, which talks about what a yes means, what a no means, looks like this, something like this. And then there is the referendum or resolution of the question that is posed. And I'll read it for those who, for those online. Shall the school district of Milton, Rockin, Jefferson Counties, Wisconsin, be authorized to issue pursuant to Chapter Sixty-Seven of Wisconsin statutes, general obligation bonds and amount not to exceed fifty-nine point nine million for the public purpose of paying the cost of a district-wide school building and improvement program consisting of construction of academic additions and renovations at all existing elementary schools and at the existing middle school, construction of additions including a new stem wing, a new swimming pool, and gymnasium space, and renovations at the existing high school, district-wide capital maintenance, safety, and ADA accessibility improvements, and acquisition of related furnishings, fixtures, and equipment. So that's the resolution drafted based on the option and discussion that the board has had. And so this is what we're bringing forward for you to review. There's obviously no action tonight on this, but what we're looking for is again, discussion and for suggestions of change or clarification.
Does anyone have any questions on the wording of the referendum ballot? As Tim stated, this is just for you at this point and we go up for a vote at our next meeting, which is January fourteenth. Okay. Thank you very much. Next item is discussion and possible action on crisis communication management plan.
Thank you. As outlined in the, your board packet and your memo, Wisconsin Act One Forty-Three, also known, known as Wisconsin State Statute One Eighteen Point Zero Seven, does require that school districts adopt annually their school safety plan and submit that to the Office of School Safety. The plan actually needs to be approved by the school board every three years. So we have until one-one of nineteen to do that. So we've given the board some time to review that through Google Docs over the last month. Just a quick reminder that the, the school's crisis communication plan is a, is a response guideline. It's put together with a lot of input from our student services staff. It's put together with our building and ground staff. It's also put together with our local first responders, our inter-agency safe schools team that meets monthly. We look at the practices within it. Kim Cross, our administrative assistant, spent a lot of time kind of cleaning it up and putting it into a format that is much easier for you folks to read. The seventy-five pages in the document reflect what are typically referred to as common emergencies or crises that we might respond to. Some of those are physical in nature, others are emotional in nature. And our crisis response team comes together when situations present themselves. And then we work with our building principals or our various departments to put together the appropriate response. So everything from fire drills to active shooters to even situations like a sudden death of a student or other, again, social and emotional crises, as well as physical crisis response. If the board finds the plan to be acceptable, an appropriate motion would be to adopt the plans presented.
Okay, is there a motion? Then we can just second and we have any discussion if there's any?
I make a motion to accept the crisis communications management plan as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have the motion by Karen, second by Mike, to accept the crisis communication management plan as presented. Will you roll call again, start on your dissent, Joe?
Uh, yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Diamond?
Yes.
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 Okay. I did actually take the opportunity to, to read the whole document, very extensive. As Jerry Man mentioned, that there's a lot of detail in the second part of it. Just about every scenario that you could possibly think of is being addressed. Although I didn't see anything if a moose should enter the building, what, what the procedure would be on that.
We're still working on PETA on that. We're working with PETA on that one.
Okay. That's a little temp, um, levity for those of you that are watching out there. But I, I appreciate all the hard work that's been put into it and especially the cooperation with the, with the agencies as well. If I were, if I had children in the district, I would feel that they are safe because of the documents. Okay, next is action on the two thousand eighteen nineteen open enrollment alternative application. And I believe we have one up, correct, Tim?
I make a motion to accept the open enrollment alternative applications as presented.
Second.
Okay, Karen and Diamond. Any discussion? I would do a roll call vote since we seem to be doing that tonight. So starting at that end, Mike?
Yes.
Yes.
Tom, yes?
Yes.
Diamond?
Tom, yes?
No? Brian, no?
And yes.
Okay, okay. Motion, Gary, six-one. Action on staffing reports. It appears we have two resignations.
I'll make a motion to approve the staffing report as presented.
Second.
Motion by Diamond, second by Karen, to accept the staffing report as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Action on gifts and donations. I make a motion to accept all the generous donations and gratitude. Second. Okay, one more to, by Mike and seconded by Brian. For this particular meeting, we had eleven thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-eight sacks worth of donations to the school district of Milton, to businesses, organizations, and individuals. So again, we're, we're very fortunate to live in a community that supports the school district of Milton as strongly as they do. We did have an act, a motion in the second, although they were thinking about it saying aye.
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 Thank you, meeting dates, upcoming board meetings.
All right, Friday, December fourteenth, we have a major community meeting. We need to set that time before people leave. And then we have our benefits advisory group. Our next meeting for them is January ninth at four-thirty-three at the district office, PDC. The December twenty-fourth through January first is much of a break. January fourteenth, we have a policy committee meeting at five-thirty. And the next school board meeting at six-thirty here, we'll have them in the same room as the one-twenty-one and then here for the, there for the committee meeting and here for these board meetings. That's all we have right now in the document for our meetings.
I do need to confirm with you if you are going to be attending the state education convention in January. So just to talk to me and make sure you're going, so I can get you all registered at the early release. So I want to do that.
And I would highly recommend that, if at all possible, to, to go attend those meetings, that, that conference, convention. It's, uh, it's just, it's nice to give it to other school districts and realize that they're going through some of the same things we are. And yet, on the other hand, we may be going through some ends that aren't as tight as, as normal of some of the others. So it's good to be able to bounce ideas off everyone. I would also like to, to suggest that if anyone, hopefully we all can attend the consolidated celebration for their achievement academically. Hopefully we, we all can attend that on Thursday at nine o'clock.
And we'll post that in case there's more or more.
Okay. With that added, any motion for you? So move? Joe? Joe wants to get out of here.
Joe?